All right, good evening. Let's call the Monday, October 23rd meeting to order and start with the pledge. All right, to start, we have a public hearing for Truck and Pizza LLC.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it came in once again. This is a is for an event that will be happening at Vinegar Hill Music Theater. And this, the paperwork has all been filled out appropriately. I've provided you a copy of that information. If you're so inclined. I did, I did notice that we may get several more of these simply because they have activities that are going through the month of October into November, so there may be a few more as before the year ends.
Excuse me? You're the only ones that got them.
Yeah, I didn't, I was just gonna comment on that. He didn't add that to the, to the agenda, so that was not to the agenda, but to, but to the online packet, so that was good.
Right. Questions or comments on the public hearing? Yes, sir? Yes? Any else? Jack? Yeah, yeah. Let's just table that until public forum and then, seeing that, I'll close the public hearing on the food truck. Approval of the agenda. We have one addition, Velma.
Board report on the RSU Finance Committee.
And I got a board of directors meeting update.
RSU Finance and a board meeting. Anything else? Rule is amended. Motion by Dan. Second by Phil. All those in favor? All right, public forum, comment on any non-agenda items? Thank you, Jack, for that, though. Keep an eye on him, Joyce. Nothing from the public? All right, minutes from October 10th.
Make a motion we approve as submitted.
Motion by Dan, second by Velma. All those in favor? All right, Velma, let's start with you.
Finance Committee, RSU Finance Committee had a meeting Thursday, October 12th. They now start at 8:15 in the morning. You can join also via Zoom. The major things that they discussed, the finance department updates, there were three major projects. First is conversion to Kennybunk Savings Bank from M&amp;T, and that should be done by 11:01. They said it has gone so far, it's gone very smoothly. Two is the accounting system software should also be all converted by January 1st, and training is going to start 11:01. And ADP, their payroll is in the process of testing their time clocks. The stipend committee update, they are suggested positions, they're looking at job descriptions, annual contracts. And they did give us all the finance forms which my computer hadn't printed out, so I have them all here to give to Keith so that he can look over all the figures, but everything is looking good and the audit, they're working on the audit right now.
Thank you, Velma. Dan?
Okay, this was a school board director's meeting Monday, October 16th. We started at 6:00 PM. Couple of public comments. One individual talked about felt that there was a huge lack of communications, and another one stood up and said, mentioned comments about, you know, the district being disconnected and things that just not getting done, and some unhappy customers. They weren't pointing to direct, specific items, but they were complaining about some of that. Consent agenda items, so the approval of a new club, Poetry Out Loud, with a that's through the high school, Ivy Gardner is running that, and that will be a $3,200 stipend. A nomination of Sarah Steiner, English language teacher with a salary of $79,438. This meeting had a bunch of reports from a bunch of the different directors, or not directors, but admin and all the high school, all the school principals, so I'll go through quickly through each of those. Human Services, Dr. Scott Harrison talked a little bit about the payroll system. As Velma had mentioned, they're going to a system that's run through ADP. They're working that out. Director of Special Services, Rachel Brettner, talked about Special Olympics and Special Education. Director of Operations, Richard Turwanger Smith, talked about that last week was Bus Drivers Appreciation Week. That they're also getting ready for winter. They're still short-staffed. But they're, they're trying to get as many bus drivers as possible. Technology, Jamie Jensen, talked, kinda gave the board an update on, you know, all of the devices they have, all the data transfer. You know, when you start talking about all the schools, all the devices that are out, it's quite a lot of stuff, and he talked about all the things that they do to upkeep all of that. And the new Chromebooks coming in, old Chromebooks going out. He talked a lot about that. Communication Specialist, David Singer, talked about streamlining the website. He did talk about the Friday newsletter, and let's see, going back to Director of Operations, Mr. Smith, he talked about that this is Hispanic Heritage Month, and all the different schools are putting Latin foods on the menus. And it sounds and looks like the kids are loving it. The kids are eating like crazy, and he said that they've served over 100 more kids than last year, so that's, that's going over pretty good, I guess. Assistant Superintendent Anita Bernhardt talked about professional development, so they're doing a lot of professional development. They've started that past couple of years. So there's lots of training, lots of stuff going on for all of the staff. Each of the principals got up and kinda gave an update on their schools. They talked about all of them really talked about the new math curriculum and how challenging and intense that is, and they all felt that that was gonna certainly increase the the scores when they do the testing. KES, the enrollment is 393. KCS, the enrollment is 192. That's the highest in eight years. Sea Road School, the enrollment is 293. That's down a little bit from last year. And ML Day, Gail Keith said the, Gail Keith principal said the enrollment was 215, and she said, "Our school is full. There's no room for anybody else." MSK, enrollment is 476, and he talked about their new no-cellphone policy. Kids are not allowed to bring cellphones into the classroom, so see how that goes. And at the high school, Jeremy Saroy talked about, he mentioned that their enrollment is 707. And he talked a little bit about the new sports complex and how that field is always full between football, soccer, field hockey, what have you. That place is just rolling around with kids, so that's good, and everybody's happy with the new complex. For facilities, Richard, I covered most of that earlier. He did talk about, he's gonna give an update next month. I guess they're doing a new playground over here at ML Day, so he's gonna give an update on that. On communications, they're working on really how to communicate sensitive information, how to get sensitive information out. Velma talked a little already on, on finance. When it came to policy, they had one, two, three, four items that they did first reads on, lots of discussion on those, Human Resources Committee, Curriculum Development and Adoption, and Use of Physical Restraints and Seclusion, all of those passed. Second reads was Board of School Directors Committees, Communications Committees, Finance Committee, Policy Committee, Facilities and Operations Committee. And the biggest thing they, they did on that is each of those committees had a requirement that they looked for, you know, three people from the general public, or two people from the general public. They did away with that, and now they're just allowing anybody that wants to be on the committee to come and participate. So they're getting rid of, you know, they had complaints before on, geez, well, how come you allowed that person on your committee? And so they just wiped that off, and that was really at a request from, from their, their legal team. They said it was probably best to get rid of that, so they did that. Let's see, Board Chair, she just updated a little bit on a strategic planning meeting, and working on an outreach to focus groups, and we adjourned at 9:26 PM.
Thank you, Dan. All right, Mr. Manager, floor is yours.
Yes, just a few things to report out on. Again, we're still, we're still awaiting the final approval from DECD in terms of the TIF amendment that we had proposed. There were two things that came across my desk last week that I reported back to them on. One of them, DCD wanted to know if there was any indebtedness that was still outstanding. And they also wanted to, to understand if the reporting that was required by the TIF for the three years to report to the, to the folks at town meeting was completed, indicated that it was, and I provided documents to that effect, so they have that. So hopefully, that will wrap up that piece, and we'll get some definitive answers from them shortly. I provided to you some information related to what is called the Little Free Library. Evidently, this is a nationwide program where folks volunteer, and they place kiosks or boxes in and around public areas to assist in the exchange of books, which is, is free, so the effort here is to, is to take a book and maybe leave a book. The reason I bring it up, a kiosk has been placed on Eastern Trail next to the Limerick Road sign there. There's a fence there, and they've put a box there for, for these exchanges of books. Something that's not on the agenda, but you probably didn't see it tonight, the playground is being constructed as we speak. I'll back here. Chad White is, will be there for the remainder of the week, putting it up. He expects to be done by the end of the week. So, we'll, if you get a chance to see it, I know I, I came in on Saturday, I think he came in Friday or Thursday, placed his van, and then Saturday I saw that most of the equipment had been laid out there, and then today he was there putting, he's got some of the equipment up already. The fire chief couldn't be here tonight, so I'll give you a quick update of what he provided to me, but one of the things I did have when he was the Plimer Vent that has been installed at the fire station. We're, we're waiting, and I think the electricians were there today to come in and finish off the electrical piece of the project to, in order for the plier vents to operate. Once that's done, I guess the company will come back in and and just double-check to make sure everything is working properly and that it meets the requirements of the air being exhausted. Indicated to me that the SEBAs that have, that have been ordered have been delayed. They will not be in until November. Our new employees have started and are participating on onboarding processes. Right now, they're just coming up to, to an education on hose deployments, pumping, hydraulic calculations, hospital locations, so on and so forth. Those new employees will start their shift operations November 1st and 2nd respectively, so that will give us all the four full-timers that we had initially requested, and they'll be on board. The Truck Committee is continuing to finish up their specifications in RFPs for a new, new truck engine. I expect that during the budget process, they'll probably have something that they'll present to us for consideration, a little further down the line. The department is working on new exterior doors. I believe the doors were ordered and have arrived, so it's just a matter of the installation process. From what I understand from the chief, there's volunteers within the department that are going to put the doors up, so that will be something that will be done by the department. The dry hydrants and cistern testing should be completed by November 13th. When I spoke to him on Sunday, chief told me that he had, I think there were five left to, to inspect and to make sure that they were working properly, so one of the other things they'll be doing is they'll be recording the locations of them, the, the, whether or not they're in service, and then what kind of flow will also be from those cisterns in the event they need them. Tank 48 will need some pump repairs, but presently the, the vehicle is still in service. Engine 44, which is our newest one, has passed its test, and 46 goes for its pump testing on the 27th of October. And finally, the department will be, be participating in the Weir's Trunk or Treat on Halloween. I also just report out real quick, the Senate Road paving project is, is underway. Last week, they ground it, fine-graded it, and on Friday they paved a portion of it. They've, so the road has gone from, which is, which is good for us and the traveling public, the road has gone from 18 feet wide to 22 feet wide. So it's still within the right-of-way, but it provides some more shoulder location for the traveling public, and as you know, we continue to have more people that are riding bikes and running, so they'll give a little more safety cushion there. There's still more to be done. They anticipate grinding this week, fine-grading, and hopefully get that paved before they move on to another project. And finally, for, for me under this, Hazmat Day has been established for the spring. It'll be on April 13th from 9:00 to 12:00 noon. As the, as the date gets a little closer, we'll have additional information that will go out to the public, so they understand that that day is available.
Perfect, thank you. Moving on to business, we're looking for a modification to the Parks and Rec Reserve account. So you provided us with a adopted October 9th memo.
I provided you a memo from October 12th that I placed in your packet, as well as I have some other information here that I laid on your desk tonight as to the initial approval that was adopted on October 9th, 2012 by the Select Board. Essentially, what we're looking for here is the addition of one word, which would be expenses. So the policy in part presently states that the Parks and Recreation Donation Reserve Account will be used for equipment, uniforms needed for the parks and recreation programs, events, or parks, parks upgrades and equipment. What we'd like to add, excuse me, is expenses, equipment, and uniforms needed. If we can add the word expenses, that provides a little more flexibility for the department head to utilize the, the funds beyond equipment and uniforms, and she could hire talent for programs, purchase refreshments for activities, and utilize some funding that's donated for social gatherings such as the Christmas lighting event that happens here at the, at the municipal building. So our request is to add the expenses to the policy.
How much is in that account now, do you know?
I'm not quite sure what's in the account, but what, what's happening right now is that we're having donations that are being made by Kennybunk Savings Bank, and they would like to make them for specific reasons. One of the reasons is they would like to donate for the Christmas lighting. They would like to donate funding to be used for the mini-bus to, to perhaps put more comfortable seats in the bus for senior trips and activities. So these are things that are beyond the scope of what this capital reserve was intended for initially, so this would give us some flexibility to, to allow those donations to come in and use them for those purposes.
So it'd be anything under $2,000, right?
Correct. Anything over, she'd still have to come to the board.
She still has to come to you guys for approval.
Thinking seats would be a little more expensive.
Well, they, they very well may be, and you'll be in front of you asking for it.
Any more comments or discussion on this before we pick a vote? One word.
It's all it takes.
It's all it takes, one word.
Mr. Lawyer?
I'll second that.
Motion by Tom, second by Velma. Any more discussion on this? Seeing none. All those in favor? Anybody opposed?
I have it right here. I'll just send it on down. If you want to look at the original policy, I've attached it to the back of it as well.
All right, we have our twice-yearly vote for voting hours.
Correct, Mr. Chairman. The town clerk is once again requesting a modification to the hours that the voter registration be, would be available for folks to come in to coincide with with the hours of operation here at the municipal building. This is something that's been asked for on a yearly basis, and is, and is provided, the authorities provided to you, obviously, in state statute to allow the flexibility.
The move?
Second.
Second by Velma. All those in favor? Motion carries. You're signing this one too, Keith?
Yep. Yep, it's on its way down.
All right, we need an appointment of a warden, which we have in front of us.
Yes, the, the clerk is once again requesting authority be granted, so Sylvia Perrell can be appointed to warden for the upcoming elections.
I make a motion we approve Sylvia Perrell as a clerk requested.
Motion by Velma, second by Tom. All those in favor? Motion carries. Yes, go ahead.
It's an election warden. That is correct. But it isn't, it isn't distinct in statute, it just says warden.
She comes in with badges.
All right, we are looking for a motion on the food truck application that we had public hearing for earlier.
Yeah, I'll make a motion we approve Truck and Pizza for 10/28/23 over at Vinegar Hill.
Motion by Dan, second by Phil. All those in favor? With one abstention. And we, we should have a taste, every food truck should have to come here, and, yeah.
Yeah, my excuse me, my, my last thing on the agenda really is to have a discussion on perhaps the efforts of our municipality as in regard to affordable housing. As you know, the, the state is continuing to have issues in providing affordable housing to working families. This is a little bit different than Section 8. I don't want people to to think that we're talking about Section 8 housing here. We're talking about affordable housing for working families. And as such, I know that Kennybunk Port has just completed a project where they have a, a, a bunch of homes that are available or have been filled with working families in the area, and I'm wondering where a rundle in our select board would like to be in terms of consideration for these types of projects. I've had a discussion also with our planner, and we identified, obviously, there were a couple properties that we were looking at, but the, the one that, that we really identified is a piece of property up and near the transfer station on, off of Bergeron Drive, which we own two parcels up there that would That would um, perhaps be um, something that we could get involved in in terms of. Um, providing an option for affordable housing. When I say involved in. Um, I think my, my thought on that would be that. We could um. We could offer to a developer who wishes to work within specific guidelines. That we provide within a written contract, land that he could develop and use for affordable housing. Um. But I really don't want to go any further um, with any discussions with, with the planning board, with the planner. With uh, the, the Heritage Trust from Kennybunk Port, if that's a, an avenue you, you want to go in. Unless this board thinks it's something that uh, they want to get involved in. It will mean conveyance of land. That the town owns. We probably will need approval from this, from the um, the voters. To provide that uh, to any developer who's willing to take it on. Um, but I don't want to spin my wheels unless it's something that we think uh, is valuable to this community. Um, moving forward. So just a discussion is what I'm really looking for.
So these, these two parcels, what, do you know what size these two parcels?
Yeah, um. Give me a second. One parcel is um, one parcel is twenty-seven acres. And the other one is fifteen.
So dash six must be fifteen acres.
I would say ten-six is fifteen and ten-five is twenty-seven.
Now, I know we own them. Was there, is there any, was there ever any buildings on any of these?
No.
These are just all.
They're vacant properties.
Vacant.
Yep.
And. How accessible are they?
Well, that would certainly be a challenge. I think, I think, you know, we'd be looking at. Uh, Bergeron Drive as being uh, uh, a point of access into these, into these properties and obviously. Whoever would take on that task would have to do, address some road concerns on Bergeron Drive. As well as what they'd be doing to those properties up there. And again, it's a challenge because those properties are very ledgy.
Yeah.
There's a lot of ledge up in there, and I'm sure Phil can attest to that more than I, but um. Uh, a contractor would have to go in there and really do a lot of efforts to, to make them available, manageable for, for housing.
But certainly if the land is cheap or, you know, almost given to them, that would make, certainly helps them out quite a bit.
Well, I think that's the only way that it would really, uh, really be able to, for a developer to come in there and. Agree to any um, limitations that we put on in terms of uh, the homes and who, who can. Purchase them moving forward.
Yeah.
Uh, that's, that would be my, my thought on it, Tom. Yeah, you'd be donating property. Um, in the hopes that it would bring about those results that we'd be seeking.
So we don't, in our ordinance today, we don't, we don't have a definition to what affordable housing is, right?
That, that is correct, yeah. Um, I, I talked to Lee J. a little bit about that and in. And I think he'll bring it up with the planning board if in fact, this board feels that it's something that we want to pursue. And see where the logistics and the details take us, but um. Yeah, he said that it's not there. We, um, but there are other avenues of, of development. That uh, that can be married uh, to accomplish the goals that we want in terms of affordable housing. Yeah, they do.
Must. Yeah, we think somewhere there is, yeah.
Right.
So that, that would be another thing to help a developer along, right?
Yeah.
A lot of regulations there, but they.
We don't have anything in our, our. Codes that would ask a developer who was now developing. Um, I, in units, that so many of those units would be affordable housing. We have nothing.
We do not.
Is that something that Lee J. could talk with the planning board about?
Uh, I, I think so, but I, I'm not quite sure if that would.
It would be like a two-pronged.
Yeah, I don't know if that would, yeah, I, I see what you're saying. Perhaps maybe that's something that we could look at. In terms of existing housing units that may be being built by somebody.
Yeah, they've had that discussion. They've had the discussion on our growth ordinance, on, you know, putting X amount of homes. You know earmarked for affordable housing, but they, they, they haven't done anything.
Well, I think uh, to a certain degree, the um, the ADU statute helps move some of that in that way. That folks, you know, you know, you've reduced the density uh, requirements now and uh, you still have to meet setback requirements. But obviously, you can put some housing on your own personal property that would, would help others. So we're really looking to see if it's something, if it's a thumbs up, thumbs down, uh, what do you want to go with it? I know it's still early in the game, but um. I, you know, I, I'm not moving forward unless you guys at least um, tell me that it's something we should be looking at.
And what else are we gonna do with that land?
You could always sell it just the way it is, but you know, right now you control it. You control it and you can assist um. I, I think working families. I think, you know, um, I'm sure everybody at this table, anybody in the, had, is living this. I know um, personally, my, my daughter just moved back from South Carolina, is looking for a house to, to purchase and. They're in the four hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollar range for a young woman, single, looking for a home. That's, that's pretty tough pill to swallow, so.
Don't we own another piece of property here behind the transfers, behind the uh. Um, town garage? Do we own sixteen oh oh five?
We own, no, we don't own sixteen oh oh five. We own sixteen oh oh four. Which all, which includes the transfer station. Where the town hall is, the salt bay, they're all on that big lot. And the road goes through that lot.
Okay, because I know when we were looking at, remember we were looking at putting the, the, for a place for the town hall, we actually went in. Bergeron Drive and then walked back towards the mountain road? Was that the piece right to the right?
I think that was probably before my time, because I don't think we were looking at when I was the Velmer, but that might have been. That might have been something that you were looking at, perhaps purchasing.
Oh, that could be.
Um, in order to put that location for the town hall.
Yeah, which one of those I. Yeah, is that what it was? Like, yeah, I do remember.
So I'm thinking it was sixteen oh oh five.
I, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Thumbs up for me.
I'm a hundred percent in favor. My first fear though on this property is. Um, and obviously all these houses are gonna need wells, and we're already monitoring groundwater on sixteen oh four, right? How close do you think that would encroach on? We're mo- we're monitoring all of these.
Ten dash. Well, I, I think, I think what may benefit us is that I think we're upstream.
Okay.
Geographically of that, but yeah, I understand your concern and obviously it would be something that we'd want to consider. Because right now we're obligated to monitoring and maintaining those residential wells along that Bergeron Drive. Forever.
Right.
So. Just so, you know, we don't want to encum- encompass more if it's going to uh, be detrimental to the taxpayer moving forward.
Advertising, they're looking for somebody, uh.
I, I think so. I think we'd, we'd probably put out an uh, you know, maybe an RFP. Yeah, looking for a contractor who's willing to work with the town um, based on a donation of property. If we get that approval to uh, to put up uh, an amount of affordable housing for the working families in the area. I think that's the way we, we'd probably describe it and see how many of these uh, developers are interested in that kind of a challenge, right? And, and it will be a challenge. There's no doubt about it in my mind, because that's very uh, very tough property to probably get ready for. For homes.
But we would have, in the RFP, we would have to put that Bergeron Drive would need to be, that would be part of it, right?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I'll talk with uh, I'll talk with Lee J., but yeah, we, I, I think that uh. We've had those conversations before, and I think there'd have to be some efforts on Bergeron Drive for sure. I, yeah, you wait a second. It may be on the, on the uh, tax card that I have.
Yeah, yeah, you could certainly do a cluster and plenty of room to do a cluster and that, right? Especially affordable housings and stuff, you know.
R, R two.
One acre. My R two is one acre, man.
Okay, so what it says on the tax card, R two.
It's down, it's down to one acre now.
So am I getting the feeling that we should just sort of kick this can down the road a little bit more and see what else we can flush out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you bring us all the land that the town owns?
Well, you're, you're pretty much looking at it. We own another piece up, uh, up off of Foxcroft Lane. That's open space to that subdivision up there. That um, you guys probably have more history on it than I do. Evidently, the developer went in, did that project. And then didn't deed over the, the, the cl- the lot, the larger piece to the property owners. You guys took it by deed. Um, and now it's open space, but I talked to Lee J. about that today and it's, it, there's a lot of. Uh, shoreline zoning or wetlands issues in there that would have to be addressed in our. Location off the cul-de-sac to get into that piece is on the side that has most of the wetlands upon it. So um, other than that, um, we don't have a lot of open land that we own. Um, we u- we had the piece at uh, the thirty-three acres that was up off of Limerick Road. That was um. Who was the lady who lived there? Elizabeth, um, oh God. She passed away and we, we sold the property back to her grandson.
Grandson, yeah.
For back taxes.
Yeah, right up above the golf course.
That's right. There were thirty-three acres there. That would have been beneficial, but um, I think we did the right thing there by getting it back to the previous owners.
We always have.
And I, and I think that's about it. We don't have any other large tracts.
Any more discussion on this?
Yeah, yeah, I think we all do. I think that's a consensus.
Okay, I'll keep you in the loop and we'll see where it takes us. Uh, uh, I'm sure, I'll be curious to see how the, the planning board. And they'll react to this as being something that we really want to look at, so. I'm sure they'll be favorable. It's just a.
Cause they had discussions on affordable housing in the past, so.
Okay.
I know that there are, when, when developers come up, that every once in a while they ask them, is it, uh, you know, are these gonna be affordable homes? Or, you know, affordable housing homes, so.
Sure.
I know it's on their minds.
I know when I spoke to um, the executive director from Kennybunk Port, um, Heritage Land Trust. She indicated that the properties that uh, they built down there averaged. They were to be sold between two eighty-five and three oh five, but they cost the town. Uh, four fifty to build. So what they ended up doing is, as, as Tom had alluded to. A substantial amount of money to cover their costs came from um, HUD. To cover that cost. So that was how they were able to get that package done on property that. Evidently, the town of Kennybunk Port still owns the land. They just, um, they lease it. Yep, and they, that's how they did that. Right. Ton of, a ton of restrictions. I think you're pretty familiar with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, we got a payable warrant.
So I'll move.
Second.
Second by Dan. Alls in favor? I do have one comment. One comment? Go ahead, one question. Go ahead with the question. Through the chair, go ahead.
Through the chair. Hey, Keith, you know, during COVID, and when we were shorthanded at town hall, we had decided that we were gonna close for an hour. And our municipal building, not town hall, closed for an hour because of training. Are we gonna continue that practice? Are we gonna go back to being open?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna go back. We, you'd asked me to, and what, what occurred was that why we're closed now is that. Um, Rachel was out for six to eight weeks for um, health issues. And so now that she's back and the training has continued, um, we'll, we'll go back to a um. To open during uh, during lunch as we have in the past. So yes, I, I was waiting for you to bring it up. Um, I knew we were gonna have to have that discussion sometime, but um, I would have moved back as, as you had instructed us before.
That wasn't me, support.
Anything else tonight?
Make a motion, we adjourn at.
Motion by Dan at seven forty-seven. Second by Phil. All those in favor? Thank you for coming.